All right, we'll call the meeting to order. All right. Let's call the meeting to order. Thank you all for appearing and coming in. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Mayor Loa.
Here.
Mayor Protim Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop.
Here.
Olsen.
Here.
And Alakon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bishop, would you lead us in the pledge today?
Absolutely.
And a moment of silence.
Everybody please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Okay, I believe we can cue up the cute critter video. Well, I'm always hopeful, and all of us are all hopeful here on the council, that these little pets, these little animals, these critters are available for adoption. And they certainly would need to find a good home. So I hope the video reaches the community and people that are in the audience might consider it. Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please acknowledge the observances for the month of July?
The city of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: Parks and Recreation Month, Sarcoma Awareness Month, Social Wellness Month, and Independence Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then I guess we'll have Director of Public Works, Mr. Torres, come up on the commendation in item four, 4.1. So. Would you bring up Mr. Tapia, please? A very big deal, and I wish we could make an even bigger deal, about the fact that you've been with the city of Palmdale, serving with excellence and integrity for the past 36 years. You began your career with the city of Palmdale in 1989 as a maintenance helper at the Desert Air Golf Course. Do you remember those days?
Yes, yes. Hated it.
You performed skilled maintenance at the golf course for eight years, receiving a promotion to Maintenance Worker 1 in 1990 and to Maintenance Worker 2 in 1994, and you've held that position ever since.
Yes.
You've served in public works landscape maintenance for 12 years, and you have demonstrated a strong work ethic and pride in maintaining the beauty and functionality of our shared public green spaces.
Yes.
In other words, Robert, you've helped beautify this city.
Yes, I have.
And we are so grateful for that.
Thank you.
And you've been involved in the graffiti abatement program, and you have made lasting contributions. Over the last 16 years, you have played a central role in revitalizing neighborhoods, restoring city infrastructure, removing vandalism, and leading professional painting projects across Palmdale. Your efforts have not only improved the city's appearance, but have also strengthened the community pride. People call Palmdale home, and they're proud to do that. And you've helped attain that. Your professionalism and dedication have earned you many acknowledgements for your outstanding customer service. You will be remembered for your mentorship, your positive attitude, your team spirit, and your care that you have brought to everything you have done on behalf of the city and all its residents. Robert, because you are highly respected and admired by your coworkers, and you will be missed tremendously, but I'm sure you want to move on. Yeah?
Yeah, kind of.
Kind of?
Yes, no.
Yeah, I know, it's a mixed feeling. But your legacy will live on forever, on every wall you have restored, every landscape you've maintained, every corner of the city that looks better because of your stewardship. On behalf of the city of Palmdale, and on behalf of everybody that's here to honor you, thank you, Robert, for building and restoring a better Palmdale. And so therefore, that was a bunch of wear asses, but I made them personal, do you? Therefore, I, Richard Loa, mayor of the city of Palmdale, along with the entire city council, all these folks back here, extend our warmest congratulations and best wishes to you, Robert, for your well-earned retirement. And it's been signed by everyone on the council. Great, we're gonna... So that very warm applause, I would say it's almost hot applause, is in recognition by these people here of what you've done. Do you wish to say anything?
After 35 years? No.
All right.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Very good, okay. Well, we'll take a picture then.
All right.
Very good. Congratulations. Best wishes. Thank you. All right, very good. Mr. Mendez, are there any items to pull from the agenda?
Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items to pull from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please play the public comment code of conduct and call for public comments on the consent calendar?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public comment on Section 6, the consent calendar. We have several speaker cards. Norris Carter. Norris Carter.
Good evening.
You can't take a break.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim. City council members and city staff. My name is Norris Carter. I'm a proud member of Ironworkers Local 433. I lived in Palmdale for 25 years. I stand before you, not only as a union ironworker, but as a longtime resident of this great city. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on the renewal of the Community Workforce Agreement. The agreement is more than just a policy. It is a commitment to hiring skilled and trained local workers for the projects that shape our community. There are currently 68 ironworkers from Local 433 who call Palmdale home. There are men and women who raise families here, support local businesses, and care deeply about the future of this city. The CWA ensures that they have access to good jobs, fair wages, and safe working conditions on projects funded by our tax dollars. Approving this agreement keeps our work local. It gives the youth a pathway into meaningful careers, and it helps build a stronger Palmdale, one where people who live here can work here. Thank you for your time, and again, I respectfully ask your yes vote on the renewal of the Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Eddie Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam Protim, city council, the rest of the city council, and of course, staff. My name is Eddie Escoto Alvarez, and I am the council representative for the LAOC Building Trades. We are the 160,000 union construction workers from here all the way down to San Juan Capistrano. Beyond that, we represent all construction workers, union and nonrepresented, to make sure that they have safe working conditions, good benefits, and a pathway to a middle-class lifestyle. First of all, I want to thank staff, everybody here, for a good spirit in negotiations. I think we all left a little bit on the table, which is always a good sign of a negotiation. I also need to thank our good friend, who isn't here with us anymore, Mr. Dave Gomez. While Dave isn't here, I truly think that his spirit lives on in every single agreement that we sign in the Antelope Valley. Dave was a proud member of IBW Local 11. His wife Kathy is with us here today, a good... Working for NICA and IBW. And a lot of the work they have done, and it's been great work for everybody in our unions, not just the IBW, but the whole entire trades unionist movement. I can honestly say that we would not be here where we are today in this valley with the union movement if it wasn't for Dave Gomez. I also need to thank the city of Palmdale for your continued leadership at a time when pundits and wrongly politicians are trying to tear us apart. The city in this valley, with agreements such as this, shows us what we can do. We put our differences aside. We work on solutions to make our community stronger. Because of agreements like this, that we hope to pass today, we've been able to get a lot of people to work in the union movement. Our nonprofit, the Apprenticeship Readiness Fund, has been able to put 1,800 people to work only in the last four years. That's 90% people of color. 35% of formerly incarcerated people have given me a second, third, fourth chance in life. And the number that we really have been working on really hard, and agreements in small communities like this really is where we get at it, is 20% of women. The national average in union construction is 3. And here in Los Angeles County, Orange Counties, it's 20%. We're very proud of that. And of course, we want to continue this partnership. This doesn't stop anytime soon. We want to expand and grow. We're currently working with the AV High School District on their new adult ed building. I'm working very closely with him, with Joe, to... They want to make it after like we have at LAUSD with the Slosson Center, if you've been down there, named after our former exec director, Dick Slosson, to really... So as this area becomes the hub for transportation and energy, we want to make sure that those people are trained to work, live right here. And we're very transparent about that. I've had good conversation with our local legislators, and they're pushing us very hard. And that's one of the reasons they're pushing those large transportation projects, high-speed rail, hydrant, and other energy projects, to make sure that we get those things through. But I just want to thank you again. We want a vote yes tonight, and thank you for your continued partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alvarez.
We have Henry Carpen.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Want to start this, Mr. Loa? My name is Henry Apodaca, carpenter, Local 661 out of Silmar, representing my brothers and my sisters. And I'm in favor of the CWA, and I hope you guys are too, you know, approve this project, because I mean, I've been here since early 2000s. You know, my kids went to school, graduated college, so on and so forth. And I'm one of the lucky ones that has been working up here. I was working for Kaiser, and as we speak, I work for the prisons. So, you know, rehabilitation, so on and so forth. And I know the commute from here to the valley, Los Angeles, so on and so forth, is not fun. I did it, been there, done that. I don't miss it. And, you know, hopefully, I know there's projects coming up, and hopefully, you know, we could get them and, you know, put some good people to work, men and women. And like I said, I'm in favor of CWA, and hopefully you guys are too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alton Wilkerson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alton Wilkerson. I am the president of IBW Local 11. We represent over 11,000 members throughout LA County for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. But up here in the Antelope Valley, we have about almost 500 members here that we represent. And community workforce agreements like the ones that you have here in front of you today are, you know, middle-class sustaining jobs that help our members, but also it helps our members stay closer to home. I currently have an apprentice right now that wakes up at 2:00 in the morning to catch the bus down to Union Station, and then he hops on a train and goes to his job site. And he's actually in one of our lower classifications that doesn't make as much as our most popular one. And, you know, he makes that travel every day from up here to down there. And these types of agreements will allow members like that to work closer to home. But also, it starts careers as well, right? So you may see a project go up where it's a new apartment building. It may take six months to a year to build. But that will be the start of a career for somebody. So like myself, my first project was a three-month solar project. But here I am 16 years later, and I'm the president of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. So I'm strongly encouraging you all today to try to consider and renew this agreement with the city of Palmdale. We greatly appreciate what it's done so far for our members, and we're looking forward to what it can do for our members in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leonard Lemos.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Lemos. I'm a member of Local 300. I've been a member for about seven years. I've been a member of this community for 33 years. I've had the opportunity to grow up here and see Palmdale change. I went to school here, went to college here, and grew my family here. Now, I am in favor of this agreement because it keeps jobs here. It keeps us growing here. I've been, had experiences where I got the privilege to work on my college, and I wanted more work. And unfortunately, I didn't go on with the project. And people who weren't living here weren't spending here. So they were just coming here and then taking it somewhere else. So I want to be a part of working on more projects here. The men and women I get to work with every single day are traveling from here down there. And, you know, I just got off of the Pasadena Fire, and that really opened my eyes. Like, we activate for any community. And I know with the 500 members that we have from Palmdale-Lancaster, no one's going to build it better than us, because this is home. We've called Palmdale home for a long, long time. And I feel like if we continue to offer more opportunities here, you're going to see a lot of people continue just to stay here and build here. And you'll see Palmdale grow as it's grown since the last 33 years. I see us, you know, we have the university now. The college's completely changed. And being a part of those builds, it's amazing. And I just hope that we can build more of that and continue the agreement. Like I said, it's been great keeping it going. And I just wanted to see if we can just keep it going. Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards on this section.
So all the matters, so we'll move on to consideration of the consent calendar. All matters listed will be enacted by one motion unless an item is pulled by the council, in which case the item will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately following this portion of the agenda. Does any member wish to pull any item? Yes.
I just want to pull 6.5 for like a one-minute, maybe 30-second comment. Other than that, if there are other items, if there are no other remaining items to be pulled that we have... You want to pull something else?
I would like to pull 6.6, just so we can talk about the CWA.
Very good. Is there a motion? Is there any other item to be pulled?
I'll move to the remaining balance.
Okay, Mr. Bishop. Seconded by Ms. Bettencourt for the balance of the consent calendar.
Could be good. So we're pulling 6.5 and 6.6.
Right.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Very good. Ms. Alakon, you pulled 6.5.
6.5, real quick. The only reason I pulled it was because I just wanted to make a brief statement. 6.5 is to move our planning commission meetings to 6:00 PM. As was noted by all of our speakers this afternoon, we are a commuter city. We've got people who leave when it's dark and come back when it's dark. Even making a 6:00 PM meeting might be a stretch. But the meetings for planning commissions, they're all citizen oversight commission meetings. And if you have a regular working job, if we start our meetings at 5:00 PM, you're not able to participate. You're precluded from participating in the citizen oversight of our city. So this matter moves the meeting from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM for the planning commission. I would just like to encourage our council to consider moving all of our commission, our citizen commission oversight meetings, to 6:00 PM to allow for our large working population to be able to participate and give back to our city by virtue of our commissions. With that, I'm happy to move 6.5.
Any other comments on this item?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Olsen. All right. Call for the question. All right, and we'll move on to 6.6.
Just in the same breath, that we are a commuter community, and, you know, I'll say it until it's not true anymore. We're number one in super commuters. Number two, New York City. I think it's important that this council does everything that it can to create the jobs here at home, so that they don't have to make those drives. I think in politics, we often talk about jobs and housing. I find those conversations to be a little short-sighted. We need to talk about careers and pathways to homeownership. And I believe that everything wrong with this country stems from greed and income inequality. And the best thing we can do is create mortgage-paying jobs. Mortgage-paying jobs, they're done here, local, to set you up to buy here, stay here, live here, because Palmdale is a place to call home. And we are always going to protect that mantra. So I would like to move 6.6, and thank you for everything that you're doing for our community.
Happy to second, but I see Austin's light is on.
Okay, Mr. Bishop. Thank you for that, Ms. Alakon.
Yes, a little background. I believe in 2018, the city signed its first Community Workforce Agreement. And here we are now to renew it. The thresholds are a little bit different. I think they're a little bit more aggressive in favor of the unions, which shows our commitment for local housing and job and workforce, everything that Councilmember Olsen said. I think it's good that we're renewing this agreement and showing consistency across the Antelope Valley. And I hope the trades are appreciating what we're doing for them. And I think this agreement shows a lot of good faith on the city's part.
Ms. Alakon?
Just to echo all of my colleagues' statements, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. We are a commuter city. Our population is 170,000. Over 65,000 of our residents commute to and from over 90 minutes each day to and from work. That is difficult work, but we got to bring that work home. And I've been nothing but an advocate, tireless advocate, on every project, every contract. How many jobs are local? How many are we guaranteeing are here? Because if we can bring those jobs home, we can bring you home for your families, for your spouses, so that you can get to that soccer game, that Little League game. You can be there for your wife's dinner anniversary before it's 9:00 PM. Those are the quality of life issues that we all care about on this council. But I just want to thank each and every one of you. I see the carpenters, I see laborers, I see ironworkers. I mean, just, it's a beautiful thing to see all of the folks that really build up our community and really contribute to the quality of life here in the Antelope Valley and the city of Palmdale. So thank you to each of you for all of the hard work. You guys are unsung heroes and sheros. You know, college isn't for everybody. And the trades provide a pathway to mortgage-paying jobs, to middle-class lifestyle, and second chances that people otherwise wouldn't be afforded. And I know all about second chances, and I appreciate them, and I will support them at every step of the way. So again, thank you for each of your contributions on a daily basis. And to the children of the workers, I assume this is your son. You give of your dad's time. Your dad, you know, you're missing out on his time. Brother, oh, I thought it might be your son. But in any case, but you understand what I'm saying. My point is still the same. You know, the kids make those sacrifices too, because they know their parents are building up the infrastructure of our emerging city. So thank you again for all that you contribute to our community.
And you're absolutely right. College is not for everyone. We were just having a conversation, and her daughter just got into a major college. I'm very proud of her. My daughter doesn't like college. Signed it up twice, dropped out twice. I keep trying to convince her to go to the trades, because she's smart. She just doesn't like college. And I just want to take a minute to thank Kathy and Dave for all that you've done for our community and for the unions. I just wanted to give you a shout-out and let you know that you're still in our hearts, and we think about you all the time.
Thank you, Ms. Bettencourt.
I have one more thing to say also.
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I remember you and Dave were a big part of bringing these agreements forward. When it comes to construction labor, I'm a former IBW worker and construction worker, non-union and union. So I understand how the trades work and and how when you're working on a job and you're working for a non-union contractor, you're not getting paid the right wage all the time. I'm aware of that. Especially when you're working on anything that's contracted by the city, there's things called prevailing wage, which requires contractors to pay their workers the union scale, which I think this is an important step in protecting that, because that's not always the case. You could be on a job not getting paid correctly. And I think the oversight in that, in this contract, is important. It gets confusing. A lot of people say these contracts cost more. It's the union, it's the rate that they're being paid. It still matches the prevailing wage. It's just unfortunately the oversight that comes with it. And as far as I know, the way I read the contract, I think the city and all the trades have equal part in the oversight. Because it does take quite a bit of oversight to make sure that the contractors are doing what they need to do. But essentially, after doing the research, the scale, the rate of pay is very close or very similar, exactly the same when you're doing a job for a city or municipality. I think the threshold is as little as $1,000 can trigger prevailing wage when you're doing public work. So that's another reason I firmly believe that these agreements are good, because it holds those contractors responsible. Because from working in construction in the past, I've seen how prevailing wage isn't necessarily honored when it comes to public agencies. So that's my two cents on it, why I think these agreements are good. It adds that level of accountability. But I don't think a lot of people knew that, you know, anytime somebody is doing construction or public improvement, for whatever public agency it may be, they're subject to prevailing wage rates.
Yeah, just to dovetail off that.
Okay, give me a second.
To anybody who... Let me just finish. To anybody who says that these labor jobs cost more, or these labor projects cost more, I beg to differ to anybody who suggests that, because what costs more is when this work is not done right. And we've got to go back, and we've got to fix it. What costs more is when they cut corners. What costs more is when they don't follow OSHA standards. That's what costs more. It costs more when they don't train their workers right. Doing this right on the front end, hiring the labor workforce is a trained workforce. We know the end product that we're going to get, and we know that's quality work. We know it's quality, and it's going to last. And it's not, in the long term, going to cost us more.
Okay. I would request, everyone gets an opportunity to speak, and I reserve the right to speak after everyone else has spoken, but I would like to have the opportunity, just like everyone else does. And I am certainly in favor of all of the things that have been commented here. I think it's, it's a, it's a very valuable thing. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for bringing this forward. I know that you've worked tirelessly, not only with the leadership of this city, but also with the leadership of Lancaster, to make sure that this is not just a Palmdale or a Lancaster thing, but it's an Antelope Valley-wide thing. And it's so crucial that our two, that, that we as a region be on the same page, particularly when we're talking about well-paying jobs, career-forming jobs, mortgage-paying jobs, those types of things, and that we have that going across the entire valley. And that's very crucial. I also want to especially thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for bringing to mind the memory of Dave Gomez, who worked so, so many years tirelessly to bring this about, and really, under his leadership and that of Kathy and many other labor leaders, changed the way, the perception that this city had towards labor in the past to where we are now, where we are a worker and labor-friendly city. And that is very key, and your participation in that, and the participation by Dave Gomez and Kathy and other leaders have brought us to this point. So I appreciate that. Thank you for coming up here. I hope to see you soon, and I look forward to lots and lots of new jobs for the trades up here in Palmdale and the entire Antelope Valley. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. And is there any further comment?
I, I just wanted to dovetail on what she was saying about the quality of the work and the amount of training that these unions put their members through. These are very highly-trained and skilled people, and they will do the job right. So when you're talking about the cost of things, you're paying for an education, you're, you're paying for that training, and you kind of get what you pay for. You want the best people doing the best job. So that's, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Very succinctly, it's do it right the first time, right? Get it done right the first time. Okay.
And I, I wasn't trying to say that in a negative way. I'm just saying there's a level of oversight, and that's a commitment being made by the city and all the local trades. That needs to be ensured, that things are done correctly, that we're complying, that both sides are complying, the contractors are complying. Everything costs, costs money, but this is a good faith in the fact that, that the city will do the oversight and the local trades will do the oversight to make sure that the contractors aren't taking advantage, aren't cutting corners, and aren't doing some of the stuff like I've seen done on the field. So I think it's good that we have these agreements. I'm not saying it necessarily costs more, but even if it does, because of the level of oversight in all these contracts, it's still worth it, and it shows good faith from the city and the trades.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right, well, let's call for the question then.
Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Yeah, let's go down and take a picture. I've got to take a picture, yeah. Let's go down and take a picture. Okay. Yes.
Make sure we get, make sure we get Johnny in the back.
Yeah, yes, it's good.
Make sure we get Johnny in the back.
Yeah.
Make sure we get Johnny in the back.
Eric's looking.
No! We can't see him in the picture. We can't see him in the picture.
All right, ready? One, two, three, a few more. Hold on. All right, guys. Two, three.
Okay, ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Well, I take the MetroCard.
I will.
I'm going back.
I'm going back.
I'm going back.
Yeah, I get your.
Yeah, that's good.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's prevailing wage. It's like 30,000.
The trade is public. It's actually mainly over 1,000.
Yeah. It's actually worse than I thought, so like anything.
So you still have to pay the same rate, but you don't get all the protection and supervision and oversight.
Right. But that's where.
You don't get the union inspectors.
Right. That's where the little bit of burden cost comes in, is, is all that, all the fringe stuff and all the oversight. What, what the?
Okay, all right, so let's go back. We're done with the consent calendar, and we will now move to item number seven. And, and that is to approve planning commission reappointments for District 2 and 5. Are there any public comments for this item?
There are no public comments for this item.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the reappointment?
I will gladly move to approve. I, I don't, I don't know if we do them jointly, but I have, under the municipal code, authority to nominate for District 5. I don't know if District 2 has to do that separately, but they're all here as one item.
I think we're doing it as one item.
Okay, so I, I will gladly move both appointments?
District 2 and 5, okay.
Do I have authority to move two?
I, yeah. I think, I guess, the, I think under the municipal code, it's if the, the mayor recommends. So do we have a recommended, or is this one's?
This one, the planning commission is specific that each respective council member makes the recommendation, and then the majority of the council will then votes.
Who's five?
I'm five.
And who's two?
Yeah, you both made recommendations. Now we're just voting.
Both recommended, both of them.
Right, we're just reappointed.
Okay.
And they both, and they both asked to be reappointed.
Okay.
Right? And so they're both doing a fantastic job, and I think they should be reappointed.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion by you?
There's, I, I move to adopt both appointment recommendations.
Okay, and Ms. Alarcon, and seconded by Ms. Bettencourt. So call for the question.
Before we call for the question, I just want to say thank you to at least my commissioner, but both commissioners for their continued service. It's not easy. Like I said earlier, with regard to the changing of the, the, the commission meeting times, it's not easy to hold a full-time job, to manage a family and a household, and to contribute to your city. But these folks are committed.
And they went to planning commission school.
And they went to planning commission training. They, they, they are absolutely committed to the betterment of this community and to learning and to moving this, this city forward. And so I just want to thank specifically my commissioner, Ms. Ayesha Jones, for her ongoing commitment and for her passion with which she serves this community that she was born and raised in. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, I'd like to comment on Mr. Henderson. Dean Henderson has served on the planning commission going back to, I believe, around 2002, 2003. And he's always been an advocate for high aesthetic improvements for the city, that the buildings and everything that we construct in the city be of high value, of high aesthetic value. He has been leading the commission now for several years, and from all accounts, he's been doing a very good job. And I think we do have a cohesive, very well-prepared planning commission, and that stability is very valuable. So it's been moved and seconded. I don't know if anyone else wishes to make a comment?
No, I would just like to say I frequently watch our planning commission meetings. I think they're doing a fantastic job. I would like to thank them all.
Very good.
Same.
We're good? Okay. So let's call the question then.
Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
All right, so that brings us to item number eight, public hearing, the first of, of your hearings. So I will then open the public hearing at this point, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving amendments to Chapter 9.40 of the Palmdale Municipal Code.
Very good. Is there a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number 1657?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Olson, seconded by Ms. Alarcon. Call for the question.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
This is a voice.
Very good. And staff, do we have a report on this item?
This is the mayor, City Council. Before you, ordinance 1657, the burglar alarm systems, Chapter 9.40. The proposed amendments to the municipal code update definitions related to alarm systems, clarifying responsibilities for users and owners. It enhances accountability for misuse. The changes streamline the false alarm reporting and repair process, establishes clear maintenance requirements, and strengthens enforcement by granting the Public Safety Department the authority to apply penalties and manage appeals. These changes aim to decrease false alarms, especially for chronic violators, and conserve law enforcement resources. So as an example, fiscal year 2425, the Sheriff's Department responded to 3,938 calls for alarms. Only 36 of those calls resulted in a reported burglary. So this is another effort to free up our deputies to respond to priority and emergent calls. Staff is available for any questions?
Very good. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then thank you very much, Mr. Rayata, at this point, and we will call for public testimony. Are there any persons wishing to speak?
There are no speaker cards on this section, mayor and council.
Very good. Is there a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1657? Ms. Bettencourt, seconded by Mr. Alarcon. Any, is there any discussion?
Alarcon, who's that?
Ms. Bettencourt, and seconded by Mr. Olson. Sorry about that. Okay. I saw.
I'm in so much trouble.
I know.
Unless you were talking about my dad, I'm not sure who Mr. Alarcon is.
Start voting.
I've seen the best of them make faux pas.
Oh, yeah. Real deal.
So in any event, is there any, any further discussion? Call for the vote. Let's go.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right. So we now go to item point three, Resolution Number CC 2025-030. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the resolution?
I think we need to go to 8/2.
8/2, oh, you know what?
Bottom of the page.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry about that. Thank you.
I'll read the resolution into the, into the record. A resolution of the City of Palmdale, of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the engineer's report and the continuation of the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2025-26 for the City of Palmdale Drainage Benefit Assessment Districts Number 1 and Number 2006-02.
Okay, now we will open the public hearing, and we've read the title of the resolution. And staff, please for a report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protan, City Council members. This general item before you is for your consideration to adopt Resolution CC 2025-209, approving the engineering report and authorizing continuation of the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2526 with City Palmdale's Drainage Benefit Assessment Districts Number 1 and Number 2006-02.
Okay, now we will open the public hearing, and we've read the title of the resolution. And staff, please for a report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protan, City Council members. This general item before you is for your consideration to adopt Resolution CC 2025-209, approving the engineering report and authorizing continuation of the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2526 with City Palmdale's Drainage Benefit Assessment Districts Number 1 and Number 2006-02. The Anaverty Ritter Ranch development requires formation of the Drainage Benefit District to fund drainage facility maintenance back on April 15th and June 3rd. City Council previously adopted resolutions to initiate and preliminary approve the annual engineering report and assessment process. This public hearing represents the final step to approve the engineering report and ordering the levies for fiscal year 2526 and placing them on LA County tax roll. The proposed assessment fiscal year 2526 is an amount of $131,400, which reflects a 3.11% CPI adjustments. That concludes my presentation. Answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions by council? Very good. Is there any public testimony?
There are no public speaker cards on this item.
Very good. We'll close the public testimony portion. Is there a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number CC 2025-029?
I'll move.
Mr. Olson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bishop. Okay. We'll call for the question.
Start voting.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres.
Motion passed unanimously.
Now we'll go to item point three, 8.3. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the resolution?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the engineer's reports and the continuation of the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2025-26 for the City of Palmdale Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts and Annexations, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, and Street Light Maintenance Assessment Districts and Annexations.
Thank you. Could we have a report on that item as well?
This item is to adopt Resolution CC 2025, approving the engineer's report, authorizing continuation and levy and collection of assessments fiscal year 2526 for City Palmdale's Landscape Maintenance, Park Maintenance, Recreation Improvement, Street Light Maintenance Assessment District and Annexation, District Funds Installation, Maintenance, Servicing, Landscaping, Street Light, Parks and Related Infrastructure. City Council initiated assessment process back on April 15th to preliminary approve the engineering report. Also on June 3rd, this public hearing represents the final step to approve the engineering report and ordering the levies for fiscal year 2526 and placing them on LA, LA County tax roll. The proposed assessment for 2526 totaled an amount of $15,918,717. That concludes my presentation. Any questions you may have? Be glad to answer them.
Very good. Any questions, points? Okay, is there any public testimony on this item?
There is no public testimony on this item.
Very good. In that case, we will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. And is there a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Mr. Olson? Seconded by Ms. Bettencourt. Let's call for the question.
Start voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, now we will go to item 8.4. Madam Clerk, we'll open the public hearing, and would you please read the resolution?
Resolution CC 2025-031, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale updating the sewer collection service charge and ordering the continuation of the charge for the operation and maintenance of the Palmdale Sewer Collection System for fiscal year 2025-26.
All right. Mr. Torres?
The sewer service charge was established back in 2008 via City Council Resolution in ordinance to fund operations and maintenance of our sewer system. The 2020 rate study confirmed the sewer fees remain sufficient through 2425 and is proposed to continue unchanged for fiscal year 26, 2526. MBS prepared the 26 fiscal year sewer collection service charge report outlining the fees, methodology, and cost estimate. The total project revenues for sewer, sewer collection service charge for fiscal year 26 is $5,579,283. That concludes my report.
All right. Any questions by council? All right. All right, is there a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CC 2025-031?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Bishop?
I'll second.
Ms. Bettencourt?
Do, do we do public comments on that?
There are no public, there are no public comments. No public comments on this section.
Okay. So motion and a second?
Start voting. One more. Motion passed unanimously.
Very good. Thank you very much. We will now move to item 8.4. And we will open the public hearing on 8.4. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the resolution?
No, that's the one we just did, sir.[1726.01]
Do we do public comments on that one?
There are no public comments. No public comments on this section.
Okay. So motion and a second?
Start voting. One more. Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you very much. We will now move to item eight-point-four. We will open the public hearing on eight-point-four, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the resolution?
No, that's the one we just did, sir.
We just did eight-four.
We're done.
We're done. Now we're on nine.
City manager's report, okay. City manager's report.
Yes. Mayor, Mayor Protan, members of City Council. Fourth of July activities kick off this Friday at 11:00 a.m., both at Dominant Masari and Marie Kerr Park. Stop by for kid-friendly activities like games, crafts, and interactive activities. After that, join us for the main celebration at Palmdale Amphitheater, which will include a fireworks spectacular and national anthem flyover. The event will also feature live music, food vendors, and lots of fun. Tickets are on sale at palmdaleamphitheater.com. Admission is $6. Kids 12 and under is, are free. Gates open at 6:00 and the show starts at 8:00. Also, just a programming reminder that the farmer's market this Friday will not be taking place due to the Fourth of July festivities. Also on Friday, July 11th, join us at the amphitheater for Friday night movies where Inside Out will be the feature presentation. Get your tickets online. Gates open at 6:00 a.m. and the movie starts at dusk. Willy Wonka Kids will be the summer theater camp performance at Palmdale Playhouse. The show will be Saturday, July 12th at 5:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale at palmdaleplayhouse.com. Yellin Park will host Poolside Potty for pups. I had to get that right. Poolside Potty for pups on Saturday, July 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Bring your furry friends and socialize, socialize with the pups. The event will feature music, treats, and pop-up pools for our furry friends out there. So that should be a lot of fun. And this month is, marks the kickoff to our summer concert series. On July 19th, Palmdale Amphitheater will host Dustin Lynch, who has nine number-one hits and four top-five albums. And on July 26th, Cool and the Gang will perform. Well, who doesn't know Cool and the Gang, right? Cherish and celebrate, and those are, I think they have a couple Grammys under their belt and some American Music Award. So the summer concert series is really exciting this year. I believe we'll also have TLC and the Beach Boys in August. So look online and you'll have a lot of fun there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Menace. All right. Any questions or comments on the city manager's report? All right. Item 10, LA County Fire Department report.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, how's everyone today? Jason Gorbanyis is the Fire Chief, LA County Fire Department. I'm here today to give a report on Fourth of July based on a conversation a couple weeks ago. If I may, before I get started, though, I just wanted to extend a thank you to you, the council, mayor, and the staff. Month of June is big for us, the loss of Andy Pontius. Your support, your presence at our events, Andy's name going, God bless you, Andy's name going on the memorial wall, Andy's Memorial Barbecue, having you guys present there. Sarah, thank you, Janelle, if she was here, Mayor, Councilmember Alarcon, big deal. We like to say we'll never forget. I think to remember, you got to be intentional. And your guys' support of that intentionality was huge, meant a lot to our line folk, so personally, I wanted to thank you for that. Really big deal. So thanks for being there, really, really grateful for that. So fireworks for the City of Palmdale, and LA County Fire Department, what it looks like. As I told you before, Mayor, we don't really look at safe and sane versus illegal. But what I did after the last conversation we had together, started pulling all the data out from the runs that we go on, usually between July 3rd and July 5th. And what it looks like for the City of Palmdale is, City of Palmdale is staffed by five firehouses that reside within the city limits proper. It's about 35 personnel. We increased that staffing during Fourth of July, but our daily numbers in the City of Palmdale, on average, are about 105 calls for service a day. Last year for Fourth of July was 155 on the 3rd and about 160 on the 4th. About a 50% increase depending on the way you look at the numbers. Of those additional calls, 300-plus calls over the two days, 30 of them were fire-related. So grass, hillside, backyard, and of those 30 runs, seven of them involve structures, homes, garages, outbuildings. So seven total that involve structures, 30 total that involve grass, hillsides, et cetera. Most of the grass and hillside fires were kept to a small footprint of about a quarter acre to half acre. We had one that went to two acres. The reason I bring that up is because we know that the City of Palmdale, and actually the Antelope Valley with its amazing desert, is prone to more fires due to fireworks, we upstaff. And so the way that Palmdale's going to be upstaffed for the Fourth, not only are we going to have our usual complement of engine companies, staffing, truck companies, paramedic squads, we're going to staff additional our water tenders, the big water trucks, they'll have two personnel on them, they'll be staffed, they are not normally staffed for 24 hours a day. We also are going to upstaff our patrols. There will be three patrols in the City of Palmdale, two personnel per patrol. It's a small truck with a water pump on the back, very agile, they can get out in the grass and the vegetation for us. In addition to that, the county of Los Angeles Fire Department will have two strike teams. Strike team is a complement of five apparatus with a leader pre-positioned down in Santa Clarita and at the 514 split. Usually what we do up here in Santa, I'm sorry, in the Antelope Valley, is around 1,500, we'll call those strike teams to come up here, and they run with us all night. So we have a lot of resources, and by the time we're done, I'm not only going to have the 35 people that I normally have working, I'm going to have an additional 25 working that night, and then on top of the usual engine companies, I'll have an additional 10 apparatus, either patrols, which are the two-man, or the water tenders. So that's the way we approach fireworks on Fourth of July for the City of Palmdale. I've been working the plan out with my local battalion commanders, who've been up here for the last couple years. I have the great luxury of having been a captain in Lancaster for a long time and know what Fourth of July looks like, and so we're ready for the Fourth. Keep things at a small footprint, do what we can for structure fires. For this year, when I brief the crews before they go out, Mayor, I will ask them this year specifically to note, if they can, the difference between safe and sane and illegal fireworks. I had one incident on a report where the captain did make in a notation that the structure fire was started by an illegal firework, but I feel like we can do a better job. Our reporting basically requires a company officer to go in at the end and put in physical notes, so I'll just make sure that they do that next year, so when I report, I'm sorry, this year, so then I report to you after, I can kind of give you a better idea what those numbers look like. And that'll take about a month for me to pull the numbers out of our systems.
Very good. And in fact, on the day that, of the barbecue, when I arrived, a few minutes later, half of the firefighters in there ran off to attend to a, to an incident that was going on at that very time.
Yes, sir.
So.
We had two pretty good working fires that day. I, what I mean by good is that they were actual fires requiring a lot of manpower, not good that we had fire. One was a structure fire. Our folks did an amazing job, kept it to the room of origin, and then another one was up on the hillside back there towards Cortez Hill. And helicopters and water tenders got in it pretty quick, we were able to keep it to a small footprint. It was a busy day.
That showed that not even a barbecue will stop these guys.
Nothing will stop them.
They'll get going and take care of the city.
Even with good tri-tip sandwiches, yes, sir.
It was delicious, it really was. Very good. Well, thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, that fire in Cortez Hill, was that the Joshua Rants one up in the hills?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that one. I think it was a week or, week and two ago. I was really concerned because I'm like, okay, that smoke is like way up in the hills.
Yep.
It's an area where it's super dry.
Yep.
And I noticed it was taken care of very quickly, so kudos to your team.
Thank you.
Because the fires out here, they spread really fast. I live in a part of town where fireworks aren't even allowed, the safe and sains. It's, it's extra dry out there. I had a question about the helicopter, because I've been seeing-
Yes, sir.
-your crew fly it around. I actually shared a video with Councilmember Olson. They were landing in the aqueduct, pumping up some of the water, and then dropping it, and then circling around, doing it again, over and over and over again. Looks whoever, whoever was doing it was getting really good at it. But my question would be is, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, is that helicopters don't run at night. Is that correct? Or for something like Fourth of July, would you?
We have helicopters that operate in dark hours now.
Oh, you do?
It used to be they were shut down at dusk, and that's not the case anymore. We've increased our technology on the helicopters and they are able to run at night, and I don't know if we're there yet, but we have another helicopter that drops retardant. That one, I don't believe, is clear for night operations yet, but the helicopter you see come out of Avenue M, that one can operate at night.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Is that pretty recent, or is that something that?
Within the last two years.
Okay. Because I remember watching the wildfires, and even some of the ones from earlier this year, from Palisades and Malibu and Altadena, they would say, sun's going down, we have to ground all the units. And I'm like, that's kind of a bummer, because that would be the best time to, to start, start fighting the fires is at night, but I guess not all the aircraft is equipped in a way to, to operate at night.
I love your fire behavior analysis. Yes, nighttime is the best time. It's really good, actually. It's, you are hired. It is. Nighttime provides a lot of opportunity. We have humidity that comes in at night that's not present in the day, we call that recovery. If we get the winds to decrease, a little bit of recovery coming, that offers opportunity for our folks to really get after it in some potential areas that we couldn't work during the day. Now that we can have our helicopters drop at night, it does present advantages. Sometimes we will opt not to run the helicopters at night based on our forecasting of fuels, weather, and our, our prediction, because we know the next day is going to be what we like to call sporty, and we know we're going to need the airframe running all day. So we may put a helicopter, a couple helicopters down at night, but generally speaking, we can run them at night and we keep them going.
Okay, that's good to know that we actually have some air service at night for these types of situations. So if you're shooting off illegal fireworks, not only could you get caught and get a huge ticket, but you could have a couple thousand gallons of water drop on your house, too.
Can be pretty pricey, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Fixed wings, just for clarity, fixed wings that come from state, whenever we're on state land that resides in Palmdale, that's when the fixed wing comes in, they will not operate at night. So you will see them peel off at dusk, and they won't return until daylight hours. But your rotor wing, your LA County helicopter, yeah, runs all night.
That's why we like the county.
Yeah.
They got all the cool toys.
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir, we do.
Good point, Mr. Bishop.
I just want to say thank you for everything that you do. We know that this is your busy time of year, where they call it the firefighter Super Bowl. Stay safe out there. I read yesterday about the firefighters in northern Idaho that were targeted, and I can't imagine that anybody would do that to a firefighter. People, people that risk their lives to defend us now have to look over their shoulder. It's just absurd. Sign of the times, a crazy world we live in, so just stay safe. And if there's anything you need from the City of Palmdale, please let us know, because we got your back, because you've got ours. Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir.
Ms. Bettencourt? Okay, Ms. Alarcon?
I just want to say thank you for your leadership. And I just, just a personal note, when we as elected leaders attend a memorial service for one of our law enforcement officers or one of our firefighters who make the ultimate sacrifice, it's the least that we can do. No thanks are, are needed. We're there because we support you in every way and in every form that we can, and that includes emotionally, as, as the crew, you know, moves forward and continues to grieve and, and deal with the loss of one of their family members. So thank you for your leadership. And again, just echo Councilmember Olson's comments about stay safe, my prayers will be with you. This is a difficult time of year for each and every one of you. We hope that you guys are still standing, every single one of you are still standing unwounded, uninjured, to continue to serve this wonderful community. So thank you.
Thank you. Been ready to go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, anytime.
It's good to see you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Very good. All right, so that takes us to number 11, non-agenda, public comments. Are there any persons wishing to speak?
Yes, we have David Berver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council. My name is David, David Berver. I'm a resident of Palmdale, been here for like 16-plus years. I come here because I'm, I come with a heavy heart. I wanted to be proactive. I don't have a solution. I don't expect you guys to have a solution, but I want to talk about what's going on with our neighboring cities with ICE. I feel there's a lot of, and I'm actually, I used to do, I used to help the Boy Scouts cross paths with our former mayor back in the days when they were doing the Sea Scouts. So I stayed in touch with a lot of our community people, our neighbors, the softball league, you know, name it. A lot of people, they always come to me, they're asking me like, what do you think we should do when we're seeing what's happening in LA? I don't have the answers. City of Bell, I grew up City of Bell. Bell High School was my high school. I grew up in Hynon Park in Maywood. Those cities right now are being hit really hard. I can, I can tell the name of the streets where I see that stuff happening. And the gentleman you just gave the award to, the one that was retiring, Roberto Pedia Papia? The reason I'm bringing him up, because as funny as it may seem, don't look like the day I finally took a shower and I look polished today, there are times when I, working in my yard, and my neighbors sometimes don't even recognize me. I mean, I look like one of those guys that you see them tackling on the floor, and it's only because of my skin color. I know we cannot do anything with these so-called agents, because they're at the federal level, but I think we need to be proactive. I think we need to have a special meeting with the communities, the neighbors, our folks. What do we do? What's the plan of a defense? What is the sheriff's going to do for us when we call them? Because a lot of these guys, at least the sheriff's shoulder badge, some of these guys are masked men. City of Hynon Park just recently detained a police unit, a car that looked legit, and now they're going after students. So again, I don't know what we can do, but I think we need to have the address, what are our rights? What, what was the City Council, like some mayors, like Bell Gardens, who are canceling their fireworks show for fear of their own constituents being arrested, detained? And we can't say it all undocumented. Again, we already have reports, and you've seen it. You know, I'm a father, my two sons, one's in the military, well, actually, one in the Air Force, one in, one in the Army, one's overseas in Germany. My grandfather went to Vietnam so my dad can become a US citizen. But if my dad were alive right now, I'm telling you right now, and he was a union worker, he'd be one of those guys that would be put to the ground right now, and I don't know how I would react. My son, who's married, is afraid to come here, married, got married in the Czech Republic, but he's afraid to come here with his wife, because what's happening even to people in Australia. So the thing is, I just think as, you as, and I apologize, my time's up. Either way, I'm just hoping that if you can come together, maybe as members of the council, our representation, and by the way, I did vote for a higher tax on our property taxes, because I believe in this city.
Thank you very much.
So either way, my name's nothing, if you guys want to reach out to me, I can bring maybe plus 75 people, we want to, you know, just brainstorm something.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next speaker?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
Andrea, I don't want your ice cream, I don't want your toys, I don't want your bikes. All I want is representation from you as a constituent and a voter, which I did not get when I asked for you. I feel that if I had called Lauren Bettencourt, she would have called me back in, in one hour, but you took four days. I think you lack maturity. Anyone who gets a DUI at 45 years old is lacking maturity. The reason I called you was because two weeks ago, two sheriff deputies barged into my apartment, and they came to my wife on the bed, and she's dying, and they flashed their, their flashlights on her face. She does not need that added aggravation. When I asked them why they came, they said Kaiser sent me. I called up Kaiser and they said they never sent him. Kaiser had visited my wife, who's dying, two days earlier, and they said, we did not send the sheriff's deputy. But I'm used to this brutal, stupid mentality of the sheriff's deputy. I talked, I talked to one of the sheriff's deputies, Chavez, at your Concha and Coffee events, and he says, we're entitled to do what we want to, we're, we're not going to apologize for any of our activities, and I, I believe that. I called Sheriff Barton, the two phone numbers he had on his card were disconnected. I filed a complaint, I still have yet to hear from the sheriff's deputy. This type of brutal sheriff behavior is not new. From 1970, when they, they killed three Chicanos at Chicago Moratorium, including Ruben Salazar, to right now where they're helping immigration and they're beating up people. You know, this brutality, I, I filed a complaint, of course, I didn't hear any, anything. They're just acting like assholes, like brutal pigs that they are. And I'm fed up with it, because they're doing it only to me, because I'm a Chicano and I'm a Green Party activist. They have no right to barge into my damn apartment at 4 o'clock in the morning, frightening They have no right to barge into my damn apartment at 4:00 in the morning, frightening my fa, my family, my wife, who is dying, and come in and refuse to give their names. You know, this, this is just behavior of a fascist pig, and this has always been the behavior of the sheriff's department, ever since 1970. And I am fed up with the behavior. I know nothing's going to happen to them, I'm, I know there's not going to be any report written about the behavior, they're not going to be disciplined, they're going to do it to someone else. But I know they did it to me, because I'm a Green Party activist, because I'm a Chicano, and they, they think they can get away with it. And my hope for my councilwoman to step in and, and make a, make a, um, inquiry just went over, because she's not mature enough to do that stuff. She's over there in La La Land, you know? And I, and the other thing, why didn't you have 50 cops at that, at the, the McAdam Park, doing nothing, getting overtime for nothing? It's ridiculous.
Thank you.
I know we're not typically required to respond or permitted to, but I just want to make a, just a brief comment. Mr. Hernandez, I'm happy to respond to your request, but please, I would encourage you to utilize traditional means of contacting me. Sending me a private message on Facebook is not always going to get the, the most immediate response time.
All right, all right, hold on, Mr. Hernandez. All right, is that, okay, thank you, Ms. Alakon. Captain, could, could we look into that incident, please, and give a report over to the city manager? Mr. Hernandez's file, and you're checking into that? All right. Thank you. Any other speakers?
Gary Roberts, Gary Roberts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, vice mayor, city council members. My name is Gary Roberts, and I have submitted an application for director of the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. I was appointed by the city of Palmdale in January 2018 to represent the city of Palmdale as a director of the Palmdale Aerospace Academy, and again, appointed in July 2020, serving a total of five and a half years as a director, being termed out in July 2023. I am a retired school teacher, having taught over 40 years, of which the last 30 years were at Palmdale and Highland High School, retiring in 2019. I hold life credentials in social sciences and learning disabilities. I hold a master's of education from the University of California at Santa Barbara. I believe I have expertise in curriculum instruction and assessment, finance, governance, and special education. I enjoyed representing the city of Palmdale as a director on the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. In my five and a half years on the board, we standardized our board agenda, always balanced the budget, and maintained, excuse me, an adequate reserve. I would like to see the board be more inclusive for parents, students, and the community. I would like to see a student member on the board. I would like to see a board that isn't controlling, but facilitates. A board that welcomes administrators, certificated, classified, parents, and students. I will uphold the board bylaws and make sure that the board follows the bylaws, unlike the numerous violations that happened in August through September 2024, that I brought to the attention of the Palmdale School District, which is the LEA of the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. One of the violations was the board's president's refusal at first to seat the Palmdale City Council appointee, Nardi Lopez. The board precedent also tried to arbitrarily change the board bylaws to decrease the number of directors that the city of Palmdale would have on the board. A priority for me is the retention of staff at the Palmdale Aerospace Academy, specifically the teachers who interact daily with our students. There is a high correlation of test performance and a permanent faculty. It concerns me of the high turnover rate and unfulfilled teacher positions. In 2012, the city of Palmdale and the Palmdale School District established the Palmdale Aerospace Academy with a bold vision, to provide a world-class education that integrates science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, of what we call STEAM, to prepare students for careers in aerospace and beyond. TPAA was founded to align education with workforce needs and create pathways to students into high-demand industries found in the Antelope Valley. I will continue this vision as a director, representing the city of Palmdale on the Palmdale Aerospace Academy Board of Directors. Thank you for listening.
Roger Soddersat?
Ah, the intrepid guardians of the public purse. I would like to commend you for supporting efforts to fight ICE, as the previous gentleman mentioned. We need to do everything we can to fight against the federal government enforcing immigration law. This way, we can have a lot more violent gang members, which is what our city needs. I believe it makes it safer. Can you send a few to my neighborhood, please? Thanks, good work.
We have no more speaker cards on this section.
Okay, Marcia.
Good evening.
Good evening. There's a lot that goes on to get, to get a city running, to keep it running, so much that a regular citizen like myself can't even comprehend, all the things that need to get done, and the process is, is just overwhelming to come here and just hear about all the stuff that needs to go on. As a citizen who's lived here a little over 40 years, what we see is on the surface. And back then, when I moved here, after just a short amount of time, I got a little crazy about the pools that weren't being built, and was very vocal in our wonderful Valley press back then. But at that time, we had, I believe, the premier Parks and Recs Department in, in all of Southern California, if not all of California. The three gentlemen, which I consider were the driving force, John Lasagna, Russ Byrd, and Steve Buffalo, were the ones that just kind of gave us the city direction. They looked around and saw that tremendous growth that was having, happening, and, and knew that we needed to do something. Those gentlemen really get the water park, the amphitheater, that was all they're doing. But beyond that, they were citizens of Palmdale, just like the rest of us. A couple weeks ago, Steve Buffalo's son died. His name is Brent, he worked for the Palmdale School District, he was a, like a technician. He fell off of a ladder and consequently passed away. And his son, I believe it was his third child, was just born last week. So I just wanted to make mention that even though we have a lot going on behind the scenes, the stuff that we enjoy as regular old citizens were, were brought to us long, long ago, 40 years ago, these guys were, were in charge and, and setting the path. And that little old Carrie there, she was just a little kid back then, and, you know, she's just kind of following in that wonderful path. But if we could just take a minute to think about Steve and, and his family, and his son-in-law, Mike, works for the city here, just keep them in your thoughts. Okay, thanks.
Marcia, what's the name of the young?
Brent, Brent, yeah.
Okay.
He was only 53.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, we can, I believe we can adjourn the meeting tonight in his memory and our sincerest condolences to Mr. Buffalo. I remember him well, and I see him from time to time, he's still serving on the college board. And, and another person that I think was a leader at the time was our city manager at the time, Bob Toon. And we remember his, his leadership. I used to think that he would, that his style was to select the best people for the department heads, give a direction according to whatever the policy was of the city council at the time, and just do the best that everybody could. And I think it worked for quite a long time. In fact, he was one of the longest-lasting city managers. So you were there, and several of us, of us were there at the time. So, but yeah, you're right to, to bring up the memory of those gentlemen that were leaders in, in the development of the parks. When we moved here in 1989, there was no Marie Kerr Park. It was just a field, and even Vons wasn't there. So there's been a lot of development, and we want to bring more. But thank you, Marcia, for those comments. All right, very good. So we will go to item number 13, presentation by the city attorney.
Well, first, council reports.
Sorry, again, missing the top of these pages for some reason. Okay, council reports, we'll begin with Ms. Alakon.
Sure, I'm, I'm not really going to delve into events and things, but what I did want to mention and suggest is a future agenda item based in, in some part to some of our public comment, given the tenor of what we're hearing in the media and some of the, the challenges of the, this community, all communities are facing with federal immigration enforcement. You mentioned Huntington Park, they took action because they, they recently adopted a resolution, because there were people that were illegally impersonating federal agents in their jurisdiction, and so they, they adopted a resolution that requires, that's jointly with their police force, that requires the identification of all federal agents that are operating in their city. Now, I don't know if we have the authority to implement a like resolution, so I'd just like to, to, I don't know if we make a motion to ask for a report back, analysis on their resolution, and whether or not we have like authority to adopt a similar resolution here. My concern is that I'm hearing horrific stories of masked people that are raping, in large part Latinas, that are, 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 you know, assaulting young women, minor women, minor kids. And, and if there is a means by which we can require the identification of federal agents while they're operating within our jurisdiction, I'd like to see that we, that we do all that we can to, to, to require them, so. If that's a motion, if there's a, thank you.
Okay, the, the motion is?
The motion is to get a report back and assess, from the city attorney, on the resolution that was adopted by Huntington Park, require, that was jointly adopted with their police force, that requires the identification of all federal agents that are operating within their jurisdiction, in light of the fact that they had just, they apprehended of several offenders of, of folks who were illegally impersonating federal agents and were assaulting and, and creating a, a culture of fear in their community, and whether or not the city of Palmdale has the ability to implement a resolution like that here.
Madam City Attorney, since it was not an agendized item, is it proper to move and second and, and act on this?
Correct, so she motioned, he seconded, so if you guys, if there's.
The motion is to ask for the item, but be brought back, not to have a discussion now.
So we can bring that back at the next council meeting, okay?
So long as there's a majority vote. So I moved, Councilmember Olson second.
Is there consensus, is there, is there council consensus? If there is?
I think you just take a vote.
We can vote, we can vote.
It's, it's just to bring it back in the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Everybody's, everybody's agreed?
Voice vote.
Everybody agreed? Okay, that criminals should not be impersonating ICE agents?
It's already illegal, but that's okay.
Criminals will take advantage of any opportunity to commit crimes. So, yeah, let's check it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good, all right. Okay, now we'll go to number 13.
The rest of us.
What's that?
The rest of us.
Everybody's in favor? I forgot you guys were here. All right, go ahead, Ms. Betancourt.
I, I've posted my, my report, my report is kind of light, because I was on vacation, like I told you guys, I went to the Grand Canyon for the first time and spent several weeks there, so I did, I did go to the farmer's market, and it was very lightly attended. That could have a lot to do with the heat and what's happening with ICE. I think a lot of our community members may not have been comfortable going to the farmer's market, so we might want to look into that, maybe do a survey and find out what's keeping people away.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Olson?
Yes, and I'm glad that you brought this up in, in public comment, and that this is coming back for us to have another conversation about, because I was going to mention this the last council meeting, and it just kind of got away and wasn't right. And so I was going to mention it this meeting, so it's perfect, thank you for being here. I want to tell a quick story. After, after high school, I went into the Coast Guard, and while I was in my schooling, 9/11 happened, and President Bush created Homeland Security, and I was sent to Seattle, where I was the very first of a unit called the Marine Safety and Security Team. We were an anti-terrorism team that stood up after the 9/11 attacks, and I was proud to be a part of that. But as time went by, as the years went on, the threats to the ports in the United States kind of diminished, so they were looking for things for us to do. And when the ships enter a port, they have to submit their cruise list, and every name on that cruise list was being ran by Customs and ICE and Border Patrol that just was created. And they were sending us out with our authority to board those US flagships with US citizens that had warrants for their arrests. And we were taking them off those ships, and by doing so, we took away their ability to provide for their families. They signed contracts with those companies to be there for the whole entire process. So when we intervened, we messed with their livelihoods, we threatened their families, and it was part of the reason I chose to get out of service, because I didn't sign up for that. 20 years later, what we're seeing in our streets is unfathomable to me. You know, 22-year-old me then, 42-year-old me now, I can't believe that we live in a country that allows masked men to refuse to identify themselves, that aren't even executing warrants. They're chasing people that they don't even know their names, just because of the color of their skin. So do everybody in this city that lives in fear. I am so sorry, I am disgusted at what I'm seeing from this administration and this federal government. So whatever we can do to say that that is unacceptable, you identify yourselves, you, you, we have civil laws, and we're not enforcing them with the authorities that have responsibility under the civil codes. We're putting the military in the streets. This is disgusting, I'm outraged, whatever this council can do, I, I'm all in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
All right, I submitted my report. Just go down a couple of things here. Councilmember Olson and I attended the Pride Walk, that was very well-attended. Taco Festival, I think that's the second annual one we had here at Ponsonland Square, that did very well. We had the High Desert Beer and Wine Festival, it was a little windy at first, but then the wind calmed down, and still very well-attended, still lines for everything, and, and hopefully next year, we get a little bit of a warmer day, because we moved it to June, hoping it would be warmer this year, but it ended up being on a cold and windy day in June, go figure. So hopefully next year goes a little bit better, as far as weather's concerned. We had the EFID Public Financing Authority Meeting, that account has close to about a million dollars or so, and is still collecting on future tax revenues, and I believe we're looking to go out to a, a small bond to fund some infrastructure soon on that. I attended Neighborhood Watch District 5 with Ms. Alakon, and that was very well-attended, and probably one of the better-attended Neighborhood Watches I've been to, so kudos to District 5. And that's right next door, next to the, the Together California Project, and, and the, the pool and the bowling alley, so it's a really, that's turning into a really cool part of town. So it's always nice going over to District 5. We had briefings, and most recently, the Palmdale Water District Ditch Conversion Groundbreaking, I'm looking at you, Kathy. That's a cool project. I educated myself with all the, all the whats and wheres and whys over the last week, but apparently, there's about eight miles of open ditch, where the water flows from Little Rock Dam all the way into Lake Palmdale. And that's exposed, it just runs in pretty much a dirt channel, exposed to the air and all the elements, and they are very close to securing all the funding. They've already started the project, they're, the ground wall, the groundbreaking just happened, so they're getting ready to put 48-inch pipes in the ground that's going to carry the water all the way from Little Rock Dam to Palmdale Lake in an actual, in actual infrastructure, in an actual plumbing-style system, just not exposed. So that's going to save a lot of water and a lot of money coming in from the state and other grants. So kudos to the Palmdale Water District for seeing that project through after, what, 10, 20 years of putting it together. Sometimes it's just what it takes, but DAP projects moving forward, and it was great to be there and see the Water District in action. So that's my report for this, this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Okay, so I attended a number of things that were also attended by other members of the council. Mr. Mendez and I attended the Gavard Breakfast as speakers on the activities of the city as it relates to real estate, and I think it was well-received, and I think we got to meet the people there, which were an important part of our community. I attended the AV Taco Festival as well, at the Sheriff Booster's booth that we had there to distribute information to the public regarding supporting our sheriffs through the Booster Club. The AV Chambers had a luncheon on the state of education, I attended that. Sanitation District's 14 and 20 Board Meeting, I went to the AV Edge Insulation Dinner. Ms. Betancourt and I attended the Jude Day Celebration here at Ponsonland Park, it was well-attended, it was a beautiful day that day, and that's an important celebration to honor the fact that President Lincoln gave the Emancipation Proclamation, which did not reach Texas until two years later, two, actually, two and a half years later. And that's where the celebrations began in Texas. began in Texas, celebrating the Juneteenth. And it is now a national holiday, but it is not a stay-at-California holiday. So that day, the courts were in session. The city has proclaimed it a holiday for our employees and our city residents, but the state of California has not. I was honored with an opportunity to be the KNO Speaker at San Joaquin Valley College commencement, to all of those young people that are getting ready for trades and other future employment. I attended with Mr. Bishop the EIFD Financing Authority, Mr. Mendez, myself, and Ms. Lopez had a breakfast with Plant 42 and Edwards Air Force Base, as we do every month, to continue our dialogue with them on how we can support and help each other. I also attended the Palmdale Water, Palmdale Ditch Conversion Project, which is going to conserve a substantial amount of water. I believe it's 25% of the water right now is being evaporated, and that is going to save so much more water for us at an expense that really isn't that extraordinary, once you think that this covering of that ditch is going to exist there for decades to come. So the AV Chambers 123rd Gala was last week. That was well-attended as well. And then I go downtown to the LA County Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment. So those are the items that I attended. And we'll now go to item number 13, presentation by the city attorney.
Oh, I'm on. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and City Council Members. Tonight, I have for you item 3.1. And for this one, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to recuse yourself because there's a conflict of interest.
Well, may I ask when this item was put on the agenda? And was it, and why, if it concerns me, why is it that it's not put on the agenda that it concerned me?
I'm not saying that it concerns you. It is confidential. There's just a conflict of interest.
Well, that's very extraordinary. I'm asking you, when was this actually put on the agenda?
I think it was either, I think it was Thursday, but it was definitely posted in the timely manner, five days prior or whatever. Per the city clerk, I got it to her before the agenda went out. But as to the exact day that it arose, I'm going to say either, I think it was Thursday.
So doesn't it ordinarily take four votes to place a matter on the agenda?
Well, the city attorney can, and this is a closed-session item.
Okay. When was it posted, Madam Clerk?
It was posted on Thursday.
All right. So I guess you can all go to your session. Over my objection. By the city attorney?
There is no reportable action from closed session.
Okay, in that case...
Before, Mayor, as a point of order, before we move forward with the adjourning motion, I'd like to make a motion that we, as a council, take action to add an item to our agenda this evening, based on the California statute, which allows us to do so, because information has arisen and been brought to light subsequent to the posting of our agenda. And that information requires urgent action this evening. So that will be a motion if I get a second.
Would that include your activities as a councilwoman?
I'm seconding her motion.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Can I call for the question?
You're not the mayor. Call for the question.
Mayor Loa?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Alarcon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so then we will adjourn the meeting to...
We are, the item that we are now going to discuss, based on the information that was just recently brought to light, I'd like to now make a subsequent motion. I'd like to move that we authorize the initiation of an investigation of confidential allegations that were brought forth during this closed session. I'd like to also move that we remove Mayor Richard Loa from all committees and committees and city assignments that he is sitting on currently, and also to remove his title as mayor during the pendency of this investigation.
Well, that's multiple items in one single motion. I don't know what the council being asked to do.
I'll second that motion. I guess, do we call for the question?
Is there council discussion or not?
So what's being done here? I'm being...
So, and where the city...
Just a minute.
It's a three-pronged action. I made the motion, so I'm going to restate it. The three-pronged action is this. One, that this city council authorize the initiation of an investigation of confidential allegations. Two, that during the pendency of that investigation, that Mr. Mayor Richard Loa no longer be afforded the title, the ceremonial title of mayor, and be removed from his responsibilities in representing the city on committees and commissions moving forward until the pendency of that investigation is concluded.
Given the implications of that, do I have a right to vote on that? Madam City Attorney?
I guess you would have a conflict, so you could recuse yourself from the conflict. However, I would, most people probably aren't going to vote to, in favor of that type of motion for themselves. But yes, you do have a conflict in voting on whether or not to investigate yourself.
Very good. So if the council decides this, then I'm being taken off of the, all of my assignments to the various boards and commissions that I serve on, and I'll be taken out as a mayor. Is that what's going on here?
Correct.
Okay, is that permanently then?
That's just pending investigation.
Pending the investigation.
All right, well, then I recuse myself, so you go ahead.
Don't we have to vote on this first?
If there is no council discussion, I'd call for the question.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Alarcon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, in that event, we will adjourn the meeting to July 15, 2025, at 5:00. Council chambers located here. And the young person who passed away, we will adjourn in his memory.
Brent.
Brent Buffalo.
Brent Buffalo.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you for doing that, sir.